Good afternoon, everybody. So it is February 20th, 2024. This is our February edition of the Building Committee. I want to thank all of you for your flexibility. It was kind of hard last week. Everybody in the brother was predicting a major snowstorm. A lot of cities and towns were shutting down early and then come to find out that we're listening also. Anyhow, because the city shut down last week, we were out of that. We shut down. We had a close call with particular. So that's why we're here today. So again, thank you for your flexibility coming in. Thank you for being here during your lovely February break. So with that said, I think by this point, we know most of who we are around the table. Skip the introductions. I do want to just turn it over to Craig, who has prepared the presentation that all of you should have a copy of. We'll kind of go through and I think we'll be more of a discussion model today. I think Craig will go through the slides. I'll have some information to share. I'm sure Helen may have some information to share as well. And again, just the big takeaway for today, I'll let me do it so I have the right frame of mind. The board meeting this evening, the agenda item on the boards during the board meeting is to vote on DD, the inside documents. So we need to have occur this evening in order for us to maintain our schedule, which we are entitled to do here. As a reminder, the big discussion slash vote that will be happening this evening on DD would be the building methodology. So are we going to go with a light wood stick build or are we going to go with a pre-vat metal build? So that's sort of the crux of the conversation today. I think what you're going to hear today, I think we're all going to have some positive news to share. But we'll get into some of the details and I'll just be looking for recommendations, not an official vote, but a recommendation from this body that I can state in the eye and next to at the board meeting, where the board, which way they should be voting. So with that said, Craig, you want to walk us through?
Well, I don't want to steal your fun, Greg. You want to share first, or what, the update funding source?
So I think all of you are aware, if you're here in the last meeting, Sean Mahoney from DCR was here. So a combination of DCR and EEA, which is the Energy and Environmental Affairs State Agency. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago. Helen was part of that meeting. I was part of that meeting. And there was a great discussion. Sean was there along with the Assistant Secretary to the EEA is Kurt Darrell, I believe. I forgot his last name. And we had a great conversation. There was a couple of other individuals from the same agency talking about conservation and whatnot. Through that conversation and through follow-up conversations that Sean had with Helen and Matt looking at the design, we did, we see a confirmation last week, I believe it was, last Monday, that the state has agreed to 1.2 million for this particular project, which is beyond great news. And we're going to get into, there's always stipulations to any state money. Okay, we'll get into the stipulations of what we need to do in order to satisfy the requirements that earn that 1.2 million. That then led to some follow-up conversations. I was part of a meeting last week with the EEA along with the Executive Office of Education. So the thought process was, the question, speaking of, here's, I'm sorry. The question was, how do we get the 1.2 million from the EEA to specification? And the recommendation of what we sort of worked through last week was, there's going to be an interstate agency transfer. So that 1.2 million is going to go from the EEA over to the EOV, the Executive Office of Education, and they're going to attach that 1.2 million to one of our existing skilled scout programs. So we already have that conduit already up and running. So the deadlines don't change. You know, I've been sort of drumming the beat here that our deadline of next June, that date does not change. So not only do we have to spend our current skilled scout programs by then, but we'll all have to spend this 1.2 million by then. There'll be another process that we have to follow to ensure that as we spend the 1.2 million, we're spending it towards what you have to see on the future slides. So that's great news. I think that's going to help lead the conversation today. I think it's going to help lead the conversation this evening with the trustees. I'm just going to say it right now, then I'll turn it back to Craig. If you look at the second slide, Wood Element Requests, Bullet Number One is the key bullet. This 1.2 million is assuming that we have the wood construction bill. So technically, if the trustees decided to vote on the metal pre-vat building, in essence, we're running the risk of losing the 1.2 million. Okay, so I just want to put that out and I'll get into more details later. Pretty news. So thank you to everybody for all your hard work and feedback.
And the City of Northampton money is still in the discussion at this point, but could be, do you have a dollar value that they have talked about?
Yeah. So that, that piece, I don't have a dollar figure. So as you know, we've been looking at the need for a generator for the particular project along with some potential electrical upgrades. As a reminder, the City of Northampton has a capital improvement fund program, like a better term, and all city departments have the opportunity in the fall to submit a capital improvement plan and request for different items, different projects, so on and so forth. So we did that back in the fall. None of what we asked for back in the fall pertains to this particular project. I want to thank the mayor. I want to thank the trustees. We've been talking about this project now for obviously several months. The mayor went back to the city finance director and said, yeah, what can we do to help with this particular project? So the city reached out to us to ask, is there a way that the city funds the generator in the electrical upgrades? So Tim Smith, our Facilities Director, has been developing paperwork. So right now, it's in the pipeline, I think between the mayor, the city finance director, the city council. They'll have to review that improvement. I'm guessing some point this spring we'll have an official review. So again, that would be a load off our plate if that could be funded.
And as part of this EEA funding stream, there are certain, and I want to be careful that we're not talking about the muscle list. This is a list that's been discussed very precariously with Sean and still needs to be vetted further with that department. So there could be added wood features or additional asks that we're not aware of yet. So we're still vetting how much cost is associated with the different. But as part of this, I think Alan, Matt and Sean, so you have a better idea of what you might be looking for in the facilities.
Yep, sure. So just to be clear, that 1.2 million was a figure arrived at by taking our budget gap, which, you know, time of DD was $945,000 plus Sean doing some work to ensure some of these elements were, he's not a cost estimator. So that's, that's really the difference between, excuse me, the 945 and 1.2 is they want to feature, promote, tell the story of wood when they're getting to this project. So the first one is wood fiber insulation. This is something we had priced early on in the project and something we had hoped to do. So we already had a good number of this and certainly we've got a heavy lift to include. We didn't specify that. The next one is ship that hardwood eastern white pine siding. So remember, the DD estimate we had moved towards a fiber strength board, hardy board. But again, you know, this is a stipulation the state would like to see wood feature. So helping us with that specification for white pine siding on the exterior of the building. White pine ship left Wayne's going in the shops. So what we had previously was plywood up to heat heat. So again, this is a change in species, wanting, you know, the project again to be specifying local woods. And then finally, which is truly an add, we hadn't added in the project before, but again, there was some money's added to included some baseboard and trim in classrooms and hallways. So again, telling the story of wood, featuring wood and, you know, a goal of, and we did do some analysis on quantities. The goal is to, you know, get up to 10,000 wood feet of wood that's being purchased from Massachusetts. So he will, he will help us with specifications. EEA and DCR have done this on other projects, so there is a template for it. And then when we do our check estimate at least 75% CDs, we'll see how this all goes out. There's still a number of bounds of the range that's to see.
So we'll have further dwellers in that as the next meeting is short. Going down in sources and uses, so in this 1.2 million dollar grant that's been discussed in the full resources from the project up to $7,226,100 million. And if we go back to the DD estimate that we submitted last meeting, they'll see that those numbers start to fall in line with what you have for sources now. So if we look at the fulbrity estimate, we're at 5.95 billion at hard costs, at soft costs in almost 7.2. So that's a number we'd like to see and start to jive together. It was also asked at the last meeting that we look at a local contractor, potentially through market analysis, to see what the local market holds for these numbers. And so we did reach out to several contractors. Unfortunately, many didn't have enough time in their schedule, a two-week deadline. And for that reason, we ended up with three individuals that could do the work. The one we ended up going with was Western Builders. Western Builders is doing a cost estimate based on local market. So they're looking at the last six months, they're taking fulbrity estimate, and they're basically talking back to Matt saying, in our experience, square footage for MEPs is this amount, not this amount. And so they came up with a figure a little over a million dollars less in this market. I want to caution folks that, now, that doesn't mean we're going to see that a bit, but it does mean that there are competitive markets out there right now and are seeing some benefits from that competitive market. So you can see somewhere in between those two numbers is what we're thinking.
So what building structure was that?
That's currently using the wood building structure that was in the DD estimate. And so we look at a couple of scenarios that come out of this. One is looking at, does the project end up coming in at the estimate or somewhere in that 5.9 million dollar range? You end up with a total project cost of 71,907 million. If you look at the market analysis, you end up with a figure that is closer to $6 million, about 1.1 million dollar delta between the estimate from fulbrity and what the current market holds in this area. And so I thought it'd be smart and prudent to do a median cost estimate too. So that's the third option. We're just looking at the two costs, the one from fulbrity and the one from Western and coming up with a median cost estimate. So all three of these are possible. What level we'll reach and how much shavings or added cost we will see is going to be at bid day when we start looking at competitive costs. The market analysis is certainly worth the money, but it certainly is not good. And so we want to take that with a certain level of cautiousness. But at this point in time, the DD estimate and the sources are in line. I think it's $35,000 difference if we stay with what we know today in the DD estimate at soft costs and take off the sources. So from a standpoint of finances, this will perform to conform with DD, knowing that in construction documents, we hope to hold in, we're trying to create a much more comprehensive document that will have a much better price and structure of that estimate. At this point in time, it's the best information we have.
And the soft cost that's been realigned with some rethinking, the management of the project, we brought that up some time ago, this soft cost, we're ratcheting down some from the initial numbers. I felt that the general conditions cost was high and we did get some feedback on that.
So those are actually baked into the estimates. Those are not considered soft costs. Those are part of the construction cost numbers.
Okay.
And yes, EDA and FOGG had brought their number down. I think you've had some feedback from Western too.
Yeah, yeah. Correct.
So we'll find out what the truth is as Craig says.
Okay, so then how about the fine definition of soft costs, I think architectural fees, testing fees, so what's going on?
The list right now on soft cost is architectural and engineering fees. Permitting fees have been waived as far as we're concerned at the moment, so that has no value. We have subsurface environmental testing that we've already done. We've done hazardous material surveying on the building when we thought the building was coming down. We did hydrant testing for fire protection and flow for fire protection. We did a limited phase one wetlands. T O Tech Environmental and project management are all wrapped into the soft costs. And then we have contingencies for soft costs and won't be assumed to be a 5.9 million dollar construction cost right now. So 1.2 million dollars of soft costs includes all of engineering, all of the construction work, all of the due diligence, plus contingencies that we want to keep in place for now. Do you want to share this with your committee?
All right, thank you.
So that's basically the essence of the story is today we are, we're at almost a balanced budget, taking DD into consideration and the sources that we firmly believe we have. That may change as we move forward in the February month updating the budget. In the last few weeks, we also thought it prudent to prequalify prime general contractors. And you can see the slide in there for three individuals who submitted. This is usually for larger projects. We're trying to prequalify general contractors to have the right experience, they can meet schedule when they have the experience for the complexity of the project and size of the project. Some projects smaller need more than some larger projects. So there's a blend, if you will, of finding the right contractors who fit on this project. So we've gone putting it out and getting prequalified contractors that will bid on the project, that can show a schedule that leads our schedule, that shows technical capabilities that we require for this job. We'll start to look at these three contractors and we'll either prequalify all three or we'll disqualify someone for a reason. And at that point, we would have to re-advertise the prequalified individuals. The only reason we're doing this at this point is just it's coming out in April and May. Bidding is tight during that time. We're in the five colleges region, so we're being all very careful about making sure people are, have us on the radar. This is the best way to do it. And that really is the strategy, you know, prequalifying the general contractor. So DA Sullivan, Pitt Cement, Salco, Pitt Cement, Western Builders. DA Sullivan and Western are here in the area. Salco is up in Pittsfield, Mass.
Who is Salco? Right.
They're in Pittsfield.
Does that stand for Somner's? Is that their name?
Oh, no, Salco, that's their name. So if you look up Salco, it's one large word, capital letters. So those three have submitted. We haven't gone through the packages yet. That's what's going to be happening over the next week or two. And at that point, we'll report back whether all three were prequalified or if we were at loss for, for one reason or another, to the current prequalified contract.
May I ask what you did to get these three? Phone calls or was it an ad?
Oh, no, it's an advertisement. So we follow 149. So when it's over 10 million, you have that ability to prequal, or you have to prequalify in your case, we're choosing the qualified strategy. So we advertised based on combines, central register.
And only these three responded?
There was a many who asked for bid documents or RFQ documents. However, we found that many of the locals didn't have the right certification. They didn't have enough similar project permits. So when we have a project that's coming in right now, 5.9, we have to make sure the contractors are Ecam certified. So many fell off from that standpoint a lot.
Seven, is that right, fell off?
Seven, yeah, seven fell off because of their Ecam certification. And some are in the middle of updating. If anyone ever been through a Ecam update, it takes a while and they have to wait for the paperwork to catch up and it's not going to come out immediately. So three.
We're a couple of larger, larger G C's that expressed interest and then decided to.
Yeah, it's probably not big enough for them. But a little too big for the little guys.
Right. We're not in the sweet spot, per se.
But we, I think we have a good group to prequalify and if they are all prequalified, we have three level.
No interest from Roy Construction, South Patley.
No, I can give you a copy of the bid list if you want to understand the things that we did at every class. So now we're on schedule. Right now, we're holding the schedule showing that we're going to be going to CDs if approved tonight and looking at having this group, I'm sorry, the board trustees approve somewhere on March 26th, just before, or just at the time estimates are due. So we may have to make some changes to those dates, but right now, we're trying to hold those. So everything still lines up with the construction start date or somewhere at the end of that. They weren't forced to leave this way. So right now, we're good. And we have some schedules we're working on right now that most of you are aware of. So we did the market analysis of the estimate. We shared some of that information with you today. We're looking for approval to start construction documents from the board trustees today if we'll have a final decision on border metal. We're prequalifying the G C's as we spoke and we're going to be looking to finalize that by March 1st. CD estimate is hoping to be done by the 26th. And I'm sure Helen will put that on fulbrity date that day. And then looking at approval of the CDs by March 7th.
Open for the 26th, hence the push, because I think the 26th is your one trustee.
So that's one meeting.
Is that right? Tuesday, Tuesday.
So we're looking to have the trustees come together on that date for the 26th. Again, if the estimate is a day or two off, we may have to push that and make a room to discuss a change in that. CDs complete on the 2nd. Bidding starts on April 3rd and that starts with filed submissions, the trades that are required to be bid out. And then prime contractors, which in this case may be the three that we share, will receive those filed submissions bids and we will then receive our final bid somewhere around 13th. In the comments.
Any questions to comment from the committee?
Can I register for the record? This is great news and I'm thrilled. This was an entirely different mood than how we left our last meeting. So thanks to all of our work and everyone who made that happen.
I can share, I can get in trouble with that. I want to share potentially some more positives. Get back to the DCR, EEA meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago. They were really focusing initially, the Assistant Secretary was curious why we weren't going with the CLT construction. And it really sounds like the state is trying to invest in this building material company. Curious why in order of us, how we're not going with CLT. And Helen did a great job. Too expensive. There's just no way to deal with those. So they're talking about that. Obviously, you heard about the main part, which is that 1.2 million. But then after that conversation, it sort of moved into a different path. And this other path is Sean heard loud and clear when he was here that last meeting, in essence, we're looking at two phases of overall construction. Phase one is what we're talking about right now, building this building, obviously scale back, maintaining the existing building that we have until we buy that money tree out of the pasture. If you ask about to find that tree out there. And once we find that tree, then we can move into phase two, which is then constructing that additional classroom, the head house in the new greenhouse and then demoing what we have existing. And that's sort of phase two when we find that money tree. When we were meeting with the state, they were really kind of curious about phase two. And they were curious, is that potentially the phase of the project that we can maybe incorporate some CLT, in fact, CLT really kind of high on that particular technology? So we talked about it. We sort of talked about long-term vision and so on and so forth. And then the two of the gentlemen who I referenced that were on the call, they focus on conservation. They're kind of curious, no promises in either direction, but I'm sharing this with the committee so you can understand maybe a lot of its provision here. Started talking about conservation restrictions on some of the property that we're making. Specifically, the demonstration force, which is adjacent to the VA hospital, which obviously is used by the work, horticulture programs. It's already aligned. And this notion of, would we be interested in perhaps applying a conservation restriction on that acreage? It's under 82 acres in the City of Northampton. Imagine a price tag on such acreage in this particular city. If we applied for a conservation restriction, we would still maintain the current use of that property, which is educating our horticulture students. So we would not lose that opportunity. But, you know, we would lose the opportunity to sell that property to a developer, to make money. So it potentially could be a win, but obviously a win for the state that they are increasing the conservational money in the state. And it could be a win for the school, that there could be a monetary deal made. And perhaps that deal made could then be used to complete the base. So I share that with the committee and I've shared it with this small team. I was still kind of on the fence with the metal building, to be perfectly honest, but looking long-term and knowing that this could be a reality down the road, I think it makes a lot more sense that thank you to the state, they gave us 1.2 million, if we go with the wood structure. I think to lose that 1.2, I think is a great agreement for the board trustees to have that agreement with the state. But then long-term, we may have another deal with the state that could finally complete this particular project. So I just share that. Again, nothing's set in stone, but I'll talk about some good news, maybe more good news on top of that. So I just share that with you.
Can I ask a detailed question? And asking because on page one, we're going from the XBS foam insulation. So we're going to have cavity insulation now. I would call it cellulose, right? Is there going to be a continuous exterior insulation? Is that required?
I'm not sure. It's a big change. I mean, we didn't have it.
Yeah. Well, two things. If it were me at DD, I would want to know that right away because it's going to affect how that whole thing comes together. But secondly, there's a company in Maine that's trying to do continuous wood insulation. You've heard of it there, finally. So it's an often-used project product in Germany. It's a great product. It's wood, it's stiff like foam insulation. It insulates better, doesn't catch on fire. And thus, thus far, the difficulty in getting it has been that it's in Germany and it never makes sense to ship insulation. Somebody in Maine is finally making it and say they've got it ready to ship.
Do you know the name of that?
I don't.
Matt had investigated this early on and was trying to hold it out as, you know, maybe you'd like to provide this, because this is when we were still in the phase of maybe we could get materials for free. Originally, there was interest, but I don't recall from what it means.
I'll get you that information. And it could be a selling point.
Tom, that would be on the exterior, it would. So you got the framing and then you have this product and then the finished siding.
Let it be clear, if you can hit your energy code numbers without continuous insulation, I don't think it's in our budget or a wise move to wrap it in insulation. However, if you need that to hit your energy numbers, then what you want is to look at a wood product.
So Northampton, of course, is an opt-in specialized building community. So yes, we have to hit all of the targets, the local rating, all of that, all the stuff that, you know. So yeah, continuous work to sort of these assets.
I'll get you.
Okay. What'd you see on the outside of the bomb? Is that what you see on the outside of the wall? Fiasas?
Yeah, Fias.
Is that German, that product? Okay. It's available, yeah, one place.
Exactly, and that place draws a motion.
Yeah, okay.
But now they're making.
Just another point of reference. I can't imagine a debate, but I'm open to the debate. We didn't talk about alternates, and I think there's really only one alternate that we could even potentially consider.
Right in my mind.
So we talked about the radiant floor heating. So the last estimate that we have in fulbrity included the plumbing inside the concrete slab, it was not going to include the system, and that was an alternative. Knowing where we are currently with potential revenue sources and potential estimates that we have now in front of us, you know, I'm standing up to advocate that if or when the board goes tonight to move to CD, that we include the radiant floor heating as part of the project and just get that done. So I just want to put that out there. Anybody wants to disagree or?
Definitely second.
I don't disagree with you, but was that the entire slab being radiant?
Just the shops.
Just the shops, okay. Again. Okay, why just the shops?
Oh, that was the ask.
And I think it's a wise ask.
Yeah, think about where it's mostly.
Well, agreed, but I was...
Radiant can actually be a little uncomfortable in kind of softer environments. It's not actually that warm. So in a shop, it makes sense, but in, you know, like people do it in their houses and they're surprised that their floor still feels cold. It's not actually that high temperature.
Put it right in the thing field. Say, I got a tile bathroom.
It's not, they want it to be like, they want it to be like cooking hot and they're surprised that it's just a steny, you know. Would you suggest?
It was not going to cost any more to at least get the tub in inside the classroom soon. You're just still going to have to buy a boiler to heat the shop. The rest of it is negligible. You're already spending the money on the infrastructure. And all we're going to spend is another couple of thousand dollars on tubing than the rest of the floors. You know, radiant done right will work very well. And the biggest advantage in that is it only goes up above this high. It doesn't go over the ceiling like the rest of it. And our office did an estimate too on the plumbing and the HVAC budget, and we gave within 5% at the moment, so that was a, they're probably right on target.
We have two alternates. We have one for the additional classroom radiant and then Ecam.
We're going to have to discuss the alternates. We've got to make sure we number them properly because you have to make them in order. You can't choose three and then one, you've got to go one, two, three, correct? That's still...
That is correct. I would suggest that where we are right now, we show it as documents and when we have fulbrity price, we can break out pricing.
Okay.
And if it looks like we're in trouble again, then we take it out as an add-alternate. And we can pay, you know, do it partial or the whole thing. But I think this particular ask has been on the table for a really long time and given the more comfortable feeling we have right now, let's get it in the project.
Well, I guess I was somehow missed that memo. I thought it was the whole.
The whole thing.
The whole thing. Thank you, Mr. Moran. I'd like to see the whole thing. It's not going to cost that much more.
Well, I will be sharing this evening with the board. And Craig did a great job summarizing potential revenue versus the estimates. It's still a great unknown to look at. One of the unknowns is really not an unknown. We know that in phase one, we are still maintaining the existing Ecam area. And I think if you take any time down there to walk around, you'll see that particular structure is not the best structure out there. And that they need to be some time and effort and money put into that particular building to make it sustainable up here in time until we can finish phase two. So my recommendation as a superintendent would be if we do have remaining funds in the revenue source, that we try to apply some of that to that existing building, you know, that we can have in the next year or so. I just put that out there, that if we start to compare, will we alter this? You know, one of the alternatives is effectively taking building up here by itself.
We could refer to that funds for that purpose. And subsidies, it would be highlighted in the purpose of the budgets. I would recommend that.
All right, anything else? I really appreciate everybody's time and effort and it's been a process. We have a positive meeting.
Hey Craig, just a quick procurement question. So we prequalified those three GCs, but additional...
Not yet.
Additional... Not yet. But when we do the bidding, other GCs can also bid, correct? Only those three?
No, all eight of these prequalified.
Thank you.
You're up in Pittsfield, right? You must have a relationship with Elegrone or Elegroni.
Elegroni.
Elegroni, thank you.
Yes. Yeah, Elegroni.
Did you have to talk to them and see if they had any interest?
Most are private work these days, mainly doing their own private development work. It's, they're taking over the worst street, leading the area, they purchase about, I don't know, 30, 40 properties. So they did reach out. I did talk to one of their estimators. They did ask a few questions, but at the end of the day, they did. My Dave, Dave.
Forest no longer exists, right?
I'll show you the list. I think the list represents a pretty good level of coverage of this area and the most of the contractors you can see in this area. They all seemed to be interested and just came down to the cost in the medications.
Anything else? You can share. I appreciate it.